In order to start the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, take roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Keel?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Los Liger?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Jazz?
Here.
And Brendan in his absence with notice.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a motion to approve the minutes from the July 19 meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? Not all in favor. Los Liger?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. No bills? Hard to believe. Usually they got something for me to sign. Anybody here for public comment that would like to say anything? Oh, I... okay.
Awesome. Callituation. Yeah, so I recently sent an email to y'all. I hope that you got it. If not, then I just wanted to let everybody know that you are invited to August 17 at 7:00 p.m. I am hosting a walk audit in the downtown space with AARP South Dakota. And get to partner with them, collaborate, and utilize some of their tools and their toolbox to really help us engage in some dialogue and walk the downtown space, pinpoint some of the parts and pieces that are working really well for us, and then identify some parts and components that we could definitely focus on for future projects and things like that. I did send it to Amy. I'm hoping she's forwarding it on to the HEDF. I did let the superintendent know as well, this is a great opportunity because it is also a walking path for our students that live in the South Main area, the Oakville neighborhood, Western, those that walk, bike, and walk to school. This is a really good focus on walkability for our downtown space. So please, if you are available, please do come. We'll meet up at Flora Ridge Rooming at 7:00. The walk audit itself will take about half an hour, and then we'll have a social hour afterward with refreshments provided by AARP. So if you can make it, that would be great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. Anyone else? No ordinances, resolutions, or areas? And move on to reports. Summer Park Rec program, Lori.
Woo! Hi, my name is Lori Spies. I did the summer park rec and had the most amazing time. Let's see, Hall 2. You were part of my fun summer. We had, as you know, there's three young children that help, high school kids, and they were a blessing. I want, I'm giving you some background and not just listing things we did and things we shouldn't do. I am originally from the Okoboji area. I've been on the east and west coast and all around in between many years. But now I'm back. I'm a third generation farmer's daughter from the Okoboji area in the summer. In the winters, we were in Gretinger Island. I, my great-grandparents lived here, and I have a lot of family here. So I've been in this area for a long time, and I really like it. And I love Hartford. Hartford's a pretty amazing town. Oops, storm watch.
Wow.
Okay, closed pool, we have to leave now. I have a 45-year history-ish working with youth. I have a bachelor's science degree from Minnesota State in Parks Recreation and Youth Services. I have a graduate degree in elementary education from the University of Wisconsin, the River Falls. That was a great ride. I have experience with all ages, from birth to death. And I have been in nursing homes, municipalities. I started with a preschool and went to the Okoboji and Minneapolis YMCA's. I was at a Brooklyn Park, Minnesota city, working there for some time. And some of my best fun work was in Scottsdale and Tempe, Arizona, for those cities. I've done many camps, youth camps, and senior camps as well. I have created a youth program and run it in a private athletic club that was really interesting. So all these things have helped me to be going now. And they have really benefited me in working with kids the way I am at this time. I'm having a bit of difficulty here. Let's see, I have worked in senior centers, I said. While I was in graduate school, I was a railroad breakman, and that put me through. That was a fun time, most of the time. I've got some good stories. And I was a flight attendant. I've wanted to be a flight attendant since the age of four. And on my way home from my last graduate class, I had my interview with Northwest Airlines and flew for a year and said that I did my time. But it was a great time. But all in all, youth are my passion. Youth are my jam. My time with the Hartford youth was priceless. It really was. I enjoyed the staff, and I, as a teacher mindset, I like helping people, I like building people up. And it was great to watch these high school children unfold. I initially thought that the one hour each for three different groups back-to-back was going to be quite challenging, but I knew it had been done forever. So I thought, okay, it works. But I just found it to be really good. The kids were amazing, and the fact that, you know, if you guide them, they're good. But if you're just guiding them in your head, they're not good. So I just said, you know, "Okay, I hear reporting in for the second class. Okay, stand over there," and they would all stand. It was amazing. My background is from Los Angeles and DC, working with youth. And it's good to be home. I can just say that. But the experiences were great. I got everyone involved. I just, I like to get everyone involved. Give the youth jobs, and that's really important to me. And they take it well and did well. All of the youth and staff included were reminded of the importance of playground safety, good manners, following directions, hydration, stranger danger, inclusivity, taking turns, no bullying, et cetera. And they did a great job of that, and everything was experienced in real time. And it was wonderful to see them following my plan and working it out. For responsibility and accountability, I had the youth every day. I want to make sure everyone is there the whole time. Check in and check out, and if they had to go to the bathroom, I would say, you know, "Okay, go ahead, but let me know when you're back." "Can I go get a drink?" "Yeah, but let me know when you're back." So I know they're back. And that's very important to me because kids have gotten lost in my areas and other situations, and it's not so fun. At camps, when there's 800 acres and they're running around. So it's just really important for me to keep an eye on everyone and count heads all the time. Some of the activities that we experienced were the youth. It was a really fun thing to watch the kids be well behaved. We had, they got wristbands. If one wristband said "Caught Being Good", and this wristband has a smiley face on it, and the kids go, "Oh, good, I got a yellow one last time." "What? You've got one already?" So then sometimes they'd wear them all, but they, that really was good incentive for them to have good, fun, safe play during the days. We played cornhole, four-square, scoops with the ball, catch, frisbees, solo cup bowling I introduced, puppets, we made puppets with paper sacks. There was plane writing, acting, and producing. The oldest group, the fifth and sixth graders, took it to heart. I said, "Wait, you like this?" the very first day. So there were five of them that were the ringleaders of the whole group. And they performed their play. They practiced all four weeks. And we had some of their friends come the very last day, and they performed their play. Some parents came, a grandparent came, and some of their friends came. And it was really fun, and they filmed it. I thought it was amazing for them to feel empowered. Anyway, that was a big thing. I got some little kids, I got some Hot Wheels for the kids. They had a great time with those. We made marshmallow figures, but it was kind of hot and sweaty and sticky, and we won't come back again. One of the bags was a big, huge ball, so we didn't get to use that one. We incorporated some new board games and card games, and kids even brought their own, and we played them. We played hopscotch, and they did hopscotch around the whole thing. And they were hopscotching for 20 minutes. It was really quite a procedure. I had some large dice, big yellow dice, and they rolled them, and they created their own fun games. "Hey, let's get ready for school. Let's do multiplication." "I'm not good at multiplication." "Okay, let's do adding." Okay, and they were throwing them. They had two teams. Who could get the number first? And anyway, that was fun. And I also did, made it non-competitive. That's a big thing for me, is doing non-competition. So it, everything we did became fun. It wasn't always competing to win. Obstacle course we did, basketball and tennis kickball. Became not such a big thing because I, it was fun, but we didn't play it all the time. I incorporated other things, and they tried new things, and I, they liked it because they didn't ask for kickball as often as I think they played it in the past, but I'm not sure. The last week, we had themed dress days, and that was fun for some. Many drawing and coloring projects, and they were encouraged to use their own color and go, you know, color out the lines, use a blank piece of paper, and do whatever you want, but using their imagination was a big thing this summer. There were many conversations between all of us, the kids. There was problem solving, there was encouragement going on, and we also had the fire and rescue come the very last day. And I asked them if they'd blow their horns when they came in, and they did. It was pretty exciting. The kids got all excited. And they really, both fire and rescue were really beneficial. The kids got a good amount of education out of that. Some of the favorite activities, Sergeant Damien Curtis came, and he brought a friend with him, Cave? Cave? From another town. Okay. Anyway, they played softball or kickball with us, and I've got it on film. It was great. Capture the flag is good, drawing, coloring, using their imagination. Tag was the, took the place of kickball this year. And we played tag games of a million different kinds, and it was always a good time. They, a big tag game was played on the playground equipment. And I don't know if you guys ever played any I.D. Over when you were kids, but some of the kids knew that. We, I introduced that, and the kids really got a kick out of that. Any I.D. Over, pick tales, and that was another fun thing. Cops and Robbers was big.
You got to be a certain age to know that one.
Y'all do it, right?
What, never heard of that?
I still remember that. I remember that. I think we're old enough. O'Hara, maybe not. Yeah.
Any I.D. Over, you throw a ball over the roof. And if it doesn't go over, you have to say "pick tales" so they're not there waiting for it. And then when you catch it, you run around and have to tag them. And if you tag them, before they get to your side, they're on your team. And for the little kids, I knew it would be difficult. So we played it around the open shelter area, so we couldn't trick them there. That was good. Soccer, Carter's, and donuts and pizza the last day. That was great. And we had a few kids that were, a few kids and two of us staff who are gluten-sensitive. Some gluten really bad. And we accommodated everything for them, donuts and pizza, so that was good. Some of the necessities that I wanted for a program I was leading, we had a good first aid kit. There was a first aid kit there, but I've got additional Band-Aids and supplies. And I'm glad I didn't need them, but we had them in case. There was a wonderful detailed participant release form with contacts and allergies, and I did have to use that a couple times. Wants to remind a parent to come pick up their child. Well, it was just a little thing, but I was glad I had the list. Instant dial the city hall authorities that became very helpful many times. One time I asked for a pair of scissors the next time they came out to bring freezies. It was Freezy Friday every day, every Friday. And I said, "I don't have scissors." Well, she mistook my question. "I'll run them right out." I, so I made her leave the building and bring me scissors. So that wasn't, I didn't feel good about that. I'm so sorry. I, we had boundaries for all, and they really listened. And it was, I was really pleased with how everyone worked together. Staff pre-program, we had staff pre-program meetings, two of them before camp started. So I got, so we got to know each other. They got to know how I worked, and I got to help them know how they were going to work. And they were, they were good. And the best thing was working with city hall. It really was. I, I, I just, I felt home here. I felt like I was walking, coming into this building, and I felt like it was home. So it felt very good to me. The staff only had babysitting experiences before they worked with me. And as, as we went, they felt more comfortable every day, and I could see them unfold. After two weeks, we did an evaluation, and, because they weren't going to tell me anything, and I said, "Okay, let's meet after camp today." So we did, and I said, I had to push, pull it out of them, but they finally said, "We need, we need more communication." And I said, "Okay, I agree." So you agree? So we all worked it out. I talked about how I thought it could be. "Do you agree with that?" "Yeah, that'd be good." And then, so as I brought up ideas, they thought, "Well, okay. Well, on top of that, can we do..." So me helping them talk about what they needed was really helpful for everyone. All camp participation. We didn't start, sign up early enough because of staff didn't come through till the very end. So there weren't a lot of kids, and some days there were less than others. But they couldn't tell me. I had to pull it out of them. "Okay, we, we can't have you doing a craft and a game, kickball or any game on the same day, at the same time." And then I said, "Got it." I so wish you would have told me this before. So they learned to say things right away, but I had to pull a lot. And I'm glad I did, and I'm glad I felt comfortable doing that because that made things much easier. The staff learned to, their first initial thought for the summer was, "I want to play with the kids. I want to play with the kids." And as days went on, as I said, they got stronger, more confident, and learned to say, "Okay, now, everybody over here, we're doing this." Where the first day, they were just watching me, and it was, I really loved it because, as I said, I'm a teacher background, love to see people know what's happening and able to jump in and do it. So I think they're going to be able to go on with their career, a career when they get out of school. They felt much more control as time went on. They learned to talk with the quieter kids. That's not always easy. Me being an extrovert, it took a while for me to learn how to talk to people. I thought, "Do they not like me? Do they..." whatever. And, you know, you learn, there's, they thought we're all different. But you have to learn how to work with everyone different so you can help it go by. But the staff really learned how to talk with the quieter kids and get them to open up. So I have been talking with Teresa about next year, and we both thought that I should apply again. So I think I can.
I was just going to ask you that, but that's good.
Somehow it just came up.
Sounds like you hated it. Just guessing, I'm going out there on a limb.
Should I go now? So if I, if I just, was thinking of a few things that would help me for next year is, one, to include me in, if we have time to do, if there are any people doing interviews, if I could possibly be included in it, just so I might be able to ask a few questions that, because I'm down on the drugs.
Drugs.
Down on the drugs.
We know where you're going there. Reemployment post-actual.
I skipped, I skipped the test. I don't know if you know.
There's a waiver we need to fill.
Drags.
Drags.
Drags is horrible.
Thank you. What's a, what's a foul among friends?
Yeah, that's right.
So put me in interviews if that's possible. A staff release form, I don't know if we have them, but staff release forms, just like the kids have? Did we have them?
No.
Okay. Because what, because one of the staff got hurt playing soccer, and he was out, he was able to participate the whole month, but this happened like the third day, and he was banged up. But he was still beneficial for the program. Staff duties. A lot of times, the three staff were all going around at the same time. And so, you know, I'm like, "Okay, they feel confident." Just like a girl has to take a girl to the bathroom with them when you go. I'm included. They felt most comfortable together. And so next year, I'm going to make sure before, you know, well, I did say I wanted one senior staff and one junior staff together in a program. And one senior staff, you know, me, and one of the other staff were the seniors, and then have two of the others with each of us to help. But I, it, it all worked. But I will, I will break that down more next year, so it's more functional. Prepare more transition time between activities for the, for the staff. You know, there's a lot of time, "What am I going to do next? What am I going to do next?" And those are times for transition. Hey, let's, you know, there's little teeny tiny little things you can do so the kids aren't bored, because the last thing I want is for anyone to be bored while they're waiting for their next activity. Utilize more activities to build positive relationships and communication among the youth. That's really important. And a lot of the kids know each other, but there were a few kids that were very new to the program, and they were in the program, so they would be, have a little head start, go to school. And they did fine. We all did fine. But I think it's really important to get communication. It's such a strong thing that we all need to know and help with that. I, I helped with addressing a few hurt feelings. There was this one child who, he was rather odd. And the very first day, he went, you know, let's say here's the whole built, whole shelter we were at. He would sit over in the corner all by himself, and he looked down like this. And I'm like, "Is he a psycho killer? What, what's going on?" And he would just sit there. He would just sit there. And he did that all the time. And the very last day, and I tried to get him involved, but the very last day, I finally figured him out. He was really, he wanted to follow this kid. He's, this kid was a brainiac, and the kid that he is wanting to go after all the time was a huge athlete. And finally, this kid was suffering all the time, saying, "I can't play kickball good. I can't do this good," but I finally got out of him. Well, you know, they say a couple things to him, and he's like, "Oh, okay." And he went back and played and had a great last day. But there were some, there were quite a few issues with him.
How many participants were there?
Oh, dear. There were, I would say, 30, 40, 50, regular. And that's all three groups.
And sometimes it would be, sometimes it would be.
Correct.
Per each group?
No.
No, total? Total, yeah.
Yes, the total. The smallest group, there were about 12 that were regular. I'm sorry, the first group, first and second graders. There were about 12 to 15 that were constant. The fourth and, the third and fourth graders were about 25. Now I'm going to mess up all my math. But, and then the last group, there were always five. There were always five that were steady. The last day, we had a lot more. So hopefully next year, we can hope for better.
Perfect.
So I, I addressed her feelings. A broken friendship due to too many trips with the principal. "Why aren't you hanging out with me?" "Because you, I sent me to the principal with you last summer, last year in school. I don't want that to happen this year." Who couldn't? And, you know, we talked about that. These things are so important. There were some crushes among kids. It was really fun. It was, it was just a great time. Next year, I would like to get the Zoom mobile here. And I just, again, would have to contact them early, so hopefully that could have done. Does anyone here, anyone, anyone know a professional storyteller?
We're looking at one.
Okay. I would hope to have somebody come read stories to the kids. That would be so fun.
I don't know if you can talk.
Okay. I contacted them and, yeah. Okay, so.
All right, not that I want to cut you short, but.
I'm done.
We probably got some questions. I'm sure we got some questions.
Okay.
So you want to do this again next year?
Yes, I do.
I think we need to make sure we, well, this year, we couldn't advertise it because we didn't have, we didn't know where the name was.
Right, exactly.
I think if.
Well, we were advertising, but we just didn't have applicants.
Right.
And until late.
No, I mean advertising the program to the.
Oh, to the public. Oh, yeah, yes.
Right.
Because we didn't know if we'd have.
So if we can advertise it to the public, we should be able to increase our, increase our numbers. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, you know, I would say during the winter, when we get closer, if you're interested, by all means, we want to.
And Karen always sends out the previous workers' applications as soon as they come open.
Right.
So if you want to come back, get the application right there. She does that with the pool and everything, yeah, so.
Because I see two of the names you mentioned here on people you wanted to thank, Linda Hartman and Pat Beckman. I had conversations with both, and they said they really enjoyed coming in and assisting. So.
Okay, yes.
Because they're pool people, you know, us pool people. Us pool people, hang in there.
I was also suggesting that I could go to the high school and pitch it if I could talk to the principal, get in a swing, you know, and pitch it.
Would you be comfortable doing that?
I don't know.
Well, it's hard to come out of your shell sometimes. I know. I hear you. Anybody got any questions?
Should I be embarrassed?
No, yeah, you know, you did wonderful. That's, that's an energy I can't fathom. Any questions for Lori before we trigger those? We appreciate your time. We appreciate your efforts.
I'm sorry I talked so long.
No, that's fine. That's fine. But I kind of have a stickler, you know, I try to keep the meetings. Public conference, it'll be five minutes. Yeah, but she was on the agenda. No, she was. I was trying to figure out what should we limit that to. No, we're not going to, we're not going to start looking at that.
We can cut down our staff before it's real quick.
Mine's fast.
Nice, we get in trouble.
I've heard that before. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Callie would like to say something?
I would, just real quick. I won't take much time at all. But as a parent, I really appreciate you stepping up and speaking on the show.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We signed on for it, and you heard it really come happen. My two, Aurora and Mira, were in the oldest group.
Yes!
And they absolutely loved it. Every single day, they couldn't wait to come. So thank you for providing.
Thank you. Shame your husband came to the play.
It's like almost 50% of the 56th period. That's big.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Bye, guys. See ya. Bye.
Bye.
All right, and our deputy sheriff is not able to be here. His report is in your packet. I would call it good news, our number of initiated calls went down by 85, so we should probably say that's a good thing. So he's going to be at the market tomorrow night. He's going to be at the market tomorrow night, it looks like, right? You know that? Thursday, excuse me. All right? Chamber and Economic Development Director, Amy Farr.
Thank you, my information's in the packet here, a couple of things to touch on. Tomorrow is the Hartford Chambers Golf Tournament, fifth annual. Um, we secured all our sponsorships, but we've had an abundance of people wanting to sponsor, so we kept taking them. We do have a corporate sponsor, Relia Bank, um, three, uh, lunch sponsors, um, so that was awesome that they came in very last minute, um, had some last minute swag bag, um, items as well as, um, extra pin prizes, people just wanted to donate, so we're excited for that. We have twenty teams, we had initially twenty-two, but we had two teams unfortunately have to drop out due to scheduling conflicts. Um, so looking for a fun day tomorrow, it'll be cooler, so that'll be a nice thing. Um, also, um, we have an upcoming ribbon cutting, it'll be on August ninth for Humboldt Hartford Right to Life. Then moving to the economic development side, I don't know if anyone saw the crowd yesterday, but at four o'clock Dairy Queen's coming, um, over a hundred people in attendance for that groundbreaking. They said it was one of their best groundbreaking tournaments that they've ever had, so it might have been us as Hartford or it could have been the Blizzards they offered. I'm going with Hartford, thank you very much, um, but it had nothing but great comments, um, so that was a really, um, well-attended event there. So, um, just continuing to work with different, um, individuals in the community as well as people looking at coming here.
Let me just add this, Lonnie, Lonnie said they are shooting to be open, open by.
Mid-December. Yep, the building should be done by Thanksgiving or Thanksgiving timeframe with a grand opening in December. If everything comes with supply chain and everything.
Yeah.
Yep, and they're excited, they live here now, so.
Yep.
And then getting going, I don't know if y'all have seen it, but they've been moving dirt as well, so that is in the process of getting here as well, so.
All right, what else?
Then I have a request to attend Fuel the Growth Conference 2022. Um, I did go last year, um, they're going to have different speakers this year and, um, I sent out a request. There was also an application for a scholarship for the amount of two hundred dollars from the EDPA. Um, I did like that, so I'll reach out to them tomorrow to see if I've been awarded it, if I'm able to go.
Do you have anything else or should we act on this?
No, I'm good unless you have questions.
All right, Amy has a request in there for her ability to go to the GOAP Fuel the Growth in September. Do I entertain a motion from the council?
Are you going up the morning over the evening before?
Well, that's, that's the initially.
It's different.
Different deal.
I can go what time you want me to. It's the fourteenth through the sixteenth.
You would have to go up the evening before, which.
Mm-hmm.
I did last week, when I figured the cost, I figured the night before because it starts right away at eight in the morning.
I think there's a social act maybe beforehand, too.
We have this budget in, correct?
Yeah, we have training.
Right? Yep? Any discussion? Not, oh, hold on, Karen?
Yes.
Jazz?
Deal?
Yes. Matts?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
All right, anything else to add, Amy?
No, sir, thank you.
P go. Engineer reports.
Thank you very much. Um, so parts in front of you, uh, fairly detailed there, but it did have a couple of items to add, um, and just make sure that everybody's aware. On that sixteen-month-long roadway reconstruction, Mid-American has wrapped up, they were able to do that work in two weeks, which is pretty awesome to see them, uh, step to the plate. That was that gas main that was directly underneath the roadway, which was, which was hampering what we wanted to accomplish, so great to see them, really appreciate that, what they were able to do there. Um, and then there is some additional, the water main work that were part of the main to be shut down for the majority of, uh, of the day and we're going to get, um, we want to finalize exact days so that we can get that information out there as soon as possible so that just people are aware of, um, of what's going to take place. Um, and then overall on the, uh, phasing schedule, we've gotten a couple of questions, inquiries on that, just with the level, you know, that gas main relocation taking place. And that pushed us about two weeks on that phasing schedule, uh, but overall I think we can, we can work pretty hard to, to get back pretty close to on track at least, um, but just from folks who are asking that question, but they're going to move right in there. It may have looked like it just wasn't a lot being completed lately and that's because that gas main was getting redone, so. The other question that we got, um, is there was a couple residents that reached out that have their sub-pump lines that come out towards the front of their, uh, out of the front of their house and were tying into the back of the curb and they said, are we able to continue doing that? We do not want the public to put a hole in our curb. We do have a sub-drain that's directly behind the back of curb that can be tied directly into. So that drains out the moisture that's actually underneath our roadway, that's totally fine to tie into that. Uh, Zacharias did just give us a number as well that if we wanted to, for, there's about ten of them there, for three hundred bucks, they could put a, insert a T and stub it up so it's blatantly obvious, this is where you tied to, um, as a part of the project. We discussed it, we don't really think that it's, it's, um, necessary to do every lot because there's plenty that don't go to the front, you know, they're really going to change all of that plumbing, but the one, the ten, um, I like making it very blatant that you can connect to here. With that being said, you can most certainly just dump right there, uh, in between back of curb, you know, really in that boulevard area because we do have sub-drain, so it's always going to continue to drain, but if it's a, if it's massively gushing out of there, does some of it get over top of the curb? When you see that water really in the curb, it's really what the ones that are tied directly into the side of it. I thought for three hundred bucks, this seems fairly reasonable, what we wanted you guys to take before we had to go ahead and.
Two hundred and thirty lanes still pump your own?
Well, not to the street all the time, they get a permit, so.
Right, yeah.
Some of them do pump water.
Yeah.
Yeah, they pump in the sand and I'm sure.
So basically it adds about three thousand to the project to let those ten that already have, you know, those curb.
Yeah, to tie them.
To tie them in there.
Because there's a blatant ones that we want tied in there.
That's what caused some of the bust up on that street to begin with, is that water sitting all the time, so it's nasty.
Is this something we could ask the homeowners to participate in? Or is that a stretch?
Sixth, Seventh and A Street up on, um, off of Western Avenue there in Olks, we did a project up there a few years ago and we didn't, we put all that in for them at that time, too.
We did?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, is that in the backyard?
This is in the front yard, yeah, we put it in front on them. Some of them we did go down the back, um.
Is that like off?
I think, I think we did pick some up in the back, yeah. But most of them we put down.
I think I've been here since that happened, boy, now they're starting to sound like.
And it's, like I said, it's really designed to help attack the street.
It's running all the way from the house?
Yeah. Yep, yep, quite a few of them, quite a few of them do it. Some of them going around and then some of them are just, you'll notice it because especially the ones that string out across the sidewalk, right? So this would just, all they would do is put our sub-drain, it's an insert a T, and then run it up and let them connect because they don't really want to physically touch their, their sub-drain connection, but, I mean, literally it's going to be connected together.
We just don't want a responsibility for what pre- some, the raised water, so let them hook up their own system or just supply it to them.
The other great thing is about that sub-drain system is it's in P-RAC, we're going to be pulling moisture all the time, you know? So it should help your, when you're running your sub-drain, um, it should really help take some of that moisture that's infiltrating all the above. It's really intended to take the moisture underneath the roadway, but you're not going to prevent moisture from these sides, right? So it's going to be poor moisture all the time.
Same particular if it, if it's actually roadway long-term, but it's probably a small investment of, yeah, a lot of those.
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's somebody who, I know we said they probably don't want to, um.
And they always can attach, so the nice part is that sub-drain will actually be offset, it's offset about a foot and a half behind back of curb. It's just really easy right now to do, uh, and if, I mean, I think it makes, it makes sense for sure.
Like basically putting back for those who have it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. The, especially the ones that were going through that curb, those are the ones that we can physically see, right? Because we pulled that open, they're right there, so those are the ones that we would identify. There's plenty that may very well go to the backyard or whatnot, they, they may very well not do it. Um, that's the only thing is, would I put it out on every single one of them, go, if they aren't going to do anything, it's just going to sit there.
Right, so.
But if they eventually wanted to, they can most certainly tie into that sub-drain. And we have a detail that we can most certainly just show them, hey, this is how we tie it.
Do you need action to make that happen or?
Well, there'd be a formal change order, but they're moving forward fairly quickly on it, so I would like, yeah, that it makes sense to go ahead and put it together because we're, we are most certainly moving forward on that. So formal action probably be good, but there's going to be a formal change order.
I said you're going to have to approve a change order.
Yeah.
But I think it would, it's a consensus to, you can give them.
Okay, and then we'll deal with it when we get the.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Uh, no major update on the water tower painting, they just are moving through the process of submitting specifications on that. Um, the one thing is we're going to pull the Hartford off since you're going through the re, rebranding, um, it just was going to say Hartford on the side of it, we're going to pull that off for now, um, and then I would assume at some point in time your logo would go on the.
Well, as long as they're taken, we may be ready. Right?
Maybe.
You're moving faster than the tower painters?
Let's just say, I think we'll have our logo ready before they have to paint it.
Well, as soon as, as soon as you do, because it'll probably be more complex than just Hartford.
Little bit more complex.
Painting that is different than that, so as soon as you have it, let us, let us know, all right? Um, and then everything's in there for the Water Resource Recovery Facility, big update there. The one thing is we do have a list of contractors put together that we'll be sharing with you folks as indicated, um, and those are industry-specific and local. And then we do have a draft RFP, um, for your use that we're working through right now, we just worry we make a couple tweaks so that we can submit to, to Teresa so she can review that, uh, for the proper notification. The rest of, I don't think there's any additional updates on those particular projects, that's not included in the report. Any questions?
I'll add to the regionalization, we're moving forward to try to get a, give time with some of the mayors and myself to go meet with the county commissioners, discuss that. And as it says in your report, we're prepping documents to try to see if we can, uh, the state to give us additional funding.
Kind of similar, I, uh, similar to that, but, um, there's been a lot of discussion about the Yarrawater expanding facilities. Does the city have any plans to contract more water? What's the process look like to do that? Or is, are they doing that purely to satisfy the current water contracts that they have?
So I did talk last week with Scott Buswood, Roll Water. Currently he told me that the contracts they have in place right now is all they have allocated at this time, so to get more allocations, they need to get the expansion from Lewis and Clark. And Lewis and Clark is going to do an eight million gallon expansion, Roll Water, MCWC, that we get our water from, is doing five million of that, so, um, it'll be up to their board how to allocate that out and, um, he says we can definitely buy for more water, but basically it's going to be the cost of the expansion plus commit to your facility. Um, so basically, in simple terms, he said it breaks down, it costs twenty million dollars to get another million dollars of water.
Million gallons.
Yeah, or, yeah, I'm sorry, million gallons of water allocated, so twenty million dollars for another million gallons of water. Um, at this point we haven't asked for more allocation because we got one point five and we're at our peak just using, you know, five hundred thousand, so we have that million to play with, but if we do get a big water consumer, we will need more allocations, you know, it just depends on what's on the horizon, so. Um, but to my understanding, um, that new infrastructure won't be in place till twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty, so.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's going to be a few years before we can even possibly buy for more allocation. Yeah, but, I mean, it's definitely a possibility when they get the new infrastructure in place.
Right, right. Retreating more inevitably we'll have the, at some point in the future, we'll consume more, too.
Yeah, as you're growing up, so, that's what I thought.
It definitely wouldn't hurt to look into a little bit more, just to see, uh, because when that five million's gone, that's all there is.
Is there any way to collect that water that's being pumped off those, uh, those houses on Sixth and Moon?
Hey, maybe.
Where's water released? We're sending that to the falls.
He, he, Scott went into a little more details, once they do this eight million dollar project, that pretty much caps the water for this eastern side of the state, it's, it's the water, water is an issue in the area.
Yeah, yeah. All right, what else you got, Dave?
That's it?
I don't hardly believe that.
I think it really is.
Something noticeably absent, which is nice.
Oh, yes, it is, it's not on there.
Yes, yeah.
Might have reminded Michael, he had already done it. It's not on there.
The project we're not supposed to discuss, right? It's not, maybe, oh, call. All right, any questions for Dave or ISG and Engineering? All right, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Craig?
I'm going to make mine short and sweet.
Oh, I bet you're not.
Couple of things, uh, that are on there, we are getting the stumps growing from the storm damage and then some other ones we've taken down and that's happening this week, we'll get them cleaned up. Uh, dog park, we've got what had been done the last couple of days, we are out of the clamps, so there, I think there's going to be some more coming in on Thursday to get that. Hopefully by next week we can have rails, all put top and bottom rails and, uh, fencing, so. So it is moving ahead. That's all I got besides some of my reports.
How'd you turn out with our stories, Seal guys, they're going to?
They came back and took, took care of some of the stuff.
Yeah.
The bump, I haven't heard anything back on yet, I sent you another one here the other day, um, they did send a bill, I looked it over and they overcharged us for quantities and stuff like that, so I told them to resubmit, so, well, haven't got, still waiting for the bill, so. But, yeah, they've taken care of quite a bit of it, so.
I'm going to duck on pretty big bombs on Friday.
Yeah.
You in touch with the COGS, um, crew and do they have like an ETA of, an ETA for a, and a project aid, a console aid, and there's some areas that seeded, curbs of the street not seeded, things like that?
I have not been in touch with them, but I know when we had the one meeting, they thought it was going to be October before.
I say it was, the timeline was supposed to be this fall.
Yeah. Like I said, I thought they were cleaning up right behind them and getting things done, but I suppose the seeding, they'll be waiting on until seed window or whatever.
Sure, yeah, infamous seed window.
Seed window, yeah.
We love the seed window. That's, that's one of them terms, seed window.
And then catch, there'll be catch. Um, I assume most of the council is aware, but we have a week at the pool and, uh, we're getting through the season and I've been in pretty close contact with Neil and with Craig regarding this. Problem's going to be, we don't know for sure what we're going to see when we start digging this up this fall. So I'm saying that to this group now, because when we start budget talk, we're going to probably have to start talking about this deal, because even on repair, if we have to dig up that whole deck to fix all of them cast iron pipes, is going to be expensive. Thursday's our monthly mayor meeting, Canton is just finishing their pool project, so I'm going to, I sent Sandy their mayor a note, I'm going to try to catch up with her afterwards and have a little discussion on what do I need to know, what, you know, what did this deal cost you, is what I'm basically going to try to find out. So we have an idea when it comes to budget time, at least present dollars, this is what they spent. Yeah, and.
What is their, what is their new facility?
I don't know what they even have, so I'm hoping that she's gonna bring some of that information.
Can I add to your column on the pool?
Yeah. Stand up your Benjamin, so.
Benjamin Parker, on the pool, last one that was down in Beersford, because the Canton Pool wasn't there.
Right.
And the lake down there, at Newton Hills, dried up. So, you know, go to Beersford, take a little swim. The city, in cooperation with corporate sponsors, private individuals, and through grants, was able to build an amazing pool facility down there.
Okay.
I would suggest that you talk with the city of Beersford. They created their own committee.
Yep.
And I mean, it was just phenomenal. They had so much space. I mean, would have to relocate the pool from where it's currently at for something newer, you know? If you went with whole new construction.
Right.
But for the, the process that they went through with their fundraising and the grant process, it was just, it was amazing to see their end result after about a three-year process.
Yep, I'm gonna talk to Sandy and I'll check with them also.
Yeah.
Perfect. Yep. So when we talk about, when we talk about water usage, so to keep this thing up to level, we've been pumping water in. So you all know, Neil, that I go swimming now every, every morning, so I can believe you. I hear it every morning when we step into the pool. Yeah, so it's been a little chilly, but anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's a bad leak.
Yeah, so, and I've explained that to them, but let's leave it there. Anyway.
That being said, the last day for the pool is we're hoping we can live through till the 18th.
Right, right. Yeah, we don't wanna close. Not when we're this close to the end, and not when it's 100 degrees.
Yeah.
We got a little drain set up on it and pumping. We're recirculating about a thousand gallons a hour.
Okay. That's better. Yeah, that's better. Alright, anyway, that's on the side, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody was up to speed on that deal. What else you got, Craig?
That's all I got.
Well, it's kind of the 98 that's been on there for a while.
We just haven't had a chance to look at it.
Gotcha.
I think the clutch is out of the doors, you might have shot it the last time.
But some of you guys have fixed it. How else you wanna take that somewhere?
We could, I mean, it'd be winter time before we're gonna get a chance to.
Right, that's right. That's what I'm trying to, what's the ROI?
And right now, at this point, I'm okay with it, just leaving it sit because we've got the other vehicles, since we're short-staffed.
Sure.
And hard times can't drive clutches anyway, that's probably why. Probably why we don't have clutches anymore, so.
Wow. Makes sense. That does make sense.
So for now, we're okay, it's just sitting in the shop, sitting there, and maybe I'll tear into it sometime and do it.
I'm gonna take the bubble gum machine out of the shop too, because Neil walked, you're gone.
Right. Did we, have we had any applications?
I mean, we've had one application.
Okay. Anything else, Craig?
I'll take it off my desk the next night, so.
Yeah, hey, he's gonna take that off the list.
We're getting more and more things like that.
Keep turning it.
Thank you. So Karen?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. The agenda for the annual conference did come out on Monday, so I gave you all a copy. If anyone wants to attend, let me know and I'll get you registered. And with the, the host hotel is full already, so I need to work with Craig. He knows Watertown, figure out what's a hotel closed, but I'll get rooms booked once I kinda have a conference.
What is their home hotel, Ramcota?
Ramcota, which is the conference, where the conference is at, yeah. But they listed several others in that area, so hopefully get some pretty close. And then get our name on the host hotel, so if someone cancels, maybe we can get a room, get rooms, but.
Any questions for Karen? Alright, Theresa, anything to add to yours?
Nothing really to add. Just the one thing I do wanna point out in my report is just, so yeah, a heads up in case anybody talks about it. So our new meter system, the endpoints that send the signals to how many gallons you're using, we have an issue with a few of them, about 13, I think about, they're down to 10 now, but they're not reading properly. So we're trying to work to get that straightened up and get those reading. But on top of that, we're out of endpoints. So any new meters we install, so any new construction homes won't have these endpoints, so we won't be able to automatically read their meters. Supply chain issue, they've been, been on order for months, been backpedaled. So what we're gonna do is, you know, we will definitely contact those property owners and let them know, you know, at this point, we can't read your meter, and then each month get a meter reading from them. So we'll directly contact them and call with them, so we get those meter readings. But it's all just a supply chain issue, and as soon as we get them in, we can get them installed. So nothing we, additionally, we can really do at this point.
I did get an invoice email to me late today from them for 12, so maybe they're in route or something.
Oh, we haven't received one yet.
Yeah, we have not.
Oh, I guess we have voiced, because I looked, you know, so maybe we'll get 12, so they'll give us 12 more down the road, so.
Invoice first, deliver soon.
I know, right? So maybe hopefully we're getting 12. But just want you to be aware of it if somebody mentions it, so. Otherwise, so I, I did check into the cybersecurity check that Dells had. And unfortunately, we moved away from the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance, so we don't get that free, that service anymore. Because it was through them that they're providing this free service to the city. We moved to put off, they use Spirit Insurance, they do, and we moved to put off now. But I do have a contact for them and I sent them an email to see if they would do it for us and what the cost, maybe they, maybe they'll do it free for us. And I just haven't received any work back yet, but I'll let you know if I do.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Alright, anything else?
Nope. Any questions, Mark?
Alright, old business, Downtown Hartford, Inc. Request to utilize budget for additional downtown lighting. We had this on the agenda. We wanted a little more research. And where are we at? Gally, you wanna talk first?
Sure, yeah, that's fine. So Craig and I met the other day and we were looking at the street, basically from Main Street to the west. We measured about 60 feet that direction and we could put lights on both sides of the street. We can't really continue any further down because sidewalk channels, so we wouldn't be able to do it anyway. So we can do two to the west, and then we can do 60 foot from Main to the east, and then another 60 feet down that. So we could get four on the eastern side and two on the western side. Again, it would just be the light structure. We wouldn't add the baskets or the banner, poles or anything like that. At this time, that was considered a different way in the future.
And you originally were eight, now you're six?
Yep.
So your cost is gonna be a little less?
And it didn't sound like they really changed much in price from the last time they purchased it.
Lights, the lights stayed the same price as we replaced the one down here. That was the exact same price from almost three or two. Poles, feeling out of the one, who knows?
Yeah, that might be a little more.
Did any conversations about any adjacent property owners?
So both US Bank and Joshua's, they are in favor of, I specifically, specifically asked because we were only thinking one direction. And they said, yeah, thanks for, thanks for the offer. We appreciate it, so they're, they're taking it.
Alright, and we're looking for action to approve. Don't you guys spend the money?
Motion to approve BHI's request to utilize budget funds for additional downtown lighting as presented.
Alright.
I'll second.
There we go, second. Any discussion? Alright, we'll vote. Woslawer?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
I'll stand.
Still good? Yeah. Thanks, Gally. Thanks, Greg, for getting together and discussing that. Alright, we have new business, review, approve county plat for track one at Maple Pass. It's a little seat in your pack, if there's a little section that needs to be replanted so they can, right out in front of their property. Craig?
Yes, this would be, so where Maple Pass addition is, this is a little sliver of land that's between their southern border and the highway. They replanted it and Maple Pass plans to purchase the property and after it's replanted and add it to the city to basically make it part of their development. They believe it's a good spot that they can use for additional detention and then, you know, kind of expand their commercial area a little bit. I did put in there, so basically, you know, it's not in the city right now, so anything planted within our growth area though, that's in the county, needs approval from the city for replating. And this is within our growth area. P&amp;Z did review it at their meeting last week and has approved it. And I'll vote before you guys, and then they can take the plat to the county to actually get it filed. And then they can proceed with closing on the property, the sale of it. The pre-annexation agreement I had in my report, we had sent it to the owners, they came in today and signed it. So everything is in place for it.
Okay.
Motion to approve the county plat for track one of Maple Pass, second addition.
Any discussion? Very non-opho, O'Hara?
Yes.
Jazz? Keel?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Woslawer?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Second item under new business, review park and rec board recommendations for the storm shelter at Swenson Park Sports Complex. So we've discussed this a little bit, so.
So basically, after, you know, we know if we want to up the amount of our grant dollars from FEMA, we need to resubmit our design and our cost figures to do that, so we need to edit our scope of work. And after last council discussion, it seemed that the council wanted to stay with that 300-person capacity. So ISG presented some design options to the park and rec board at their last meeting. They reviewed them and design three, that's in your packet, that is a recommendation to go with. It still satisfies that capacity that the city wants. I think, I wasn't at the park or rec, or design one, I'm sorry. Okay, everyone's looking at me, yeah. What are you talking about? I got three in my head, yeah. You guys are all looking. Design one, sorry. It still has that three-in-a-person capacity. I think, I wasn't at the park or rec meeting, but it sounded like they wanted to have it. So the concession stand had the two opposite windows, so you can sort of out of both sides, kind of over the main factors, right? Oh, and then, then the bigger overhanging, the bigger capacity and then a larger overhang on it.
So then the roof line would basically look, this would be rectangle, is that a fair point to me?
That's expanding the building, isn't it?
Yes, it's an expansion of the building.
But that attached area is actually, there's just a little bigger, bigger solid.
Sure.
I think that's the expansion to hold the 300 people.
Right, that's actually expanding the building.
Okay, and this makes the project to? 1.6?
I said 1.6 is basically the total cost figure of it. But if we can, if we know we'll accept, you know, the, the change and the scope of work, they do, you know, we're only liable for 15% of that.
Correct.
Because they will cover the other 85%.
So it does end up about 240,000?
It's actually gonna, we had to add about 100,000 into it because there's certain things that FEMA will not, like the overhang that we looked at putting in there, they only do like one bathroom or like one stool. And if we have four in there, then that's the city's expense to have that. There's a few other things that we discussed at the park board meeting that too.
Rough math, there was what, there's 132 there, and then they were thinking?
Another 100,000.
150 more.
So 230, 250,000.
So you mean we're sitting at 250, 300, or 200,000?
Yeah.
Seems like a good option.
Alright, we need action to.
Yeah, because they could just recommend, so.
Alright.
I'll make a motion before the concept one is making more coverage than not.
Any discussion? Not, we'll vote Keel?
Yes.
Jazz?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Woslawer?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Alright. From where we've started six years ago. That would be a great question to ask. Last item under new business, annual review of cities, see you guys. Of cities' general assessment policy. Theresa and I had a conversation, we decided to end this on to have a little discussion regarding our general assessment policy. Theresa, you got anything you wanna throw out to add to that?
Well, basically, for users that have been on the council, you know that the city has adopted this general assessment policy that's in your packet. We passed that last year. We've had it in place for quite a few years and last year we decided we need to do an annual review of the policy just to review cost figures, make sure we're still in line and that's what we want to, you know, probably wanna set it up. So we adopted this July last year, so here's our annual review of it to look at, see if we want to change anything, tweak anything. You know, kind of basically the highlights of the current policy that's in place, that's in your packet is, we state that for any road reconstruction, so an existing road redoing it or whatnot, the assessment, this policy is that we will assess back to the joining property owners $200 per linear foot. So that's gonna be a cost to them. We also added last year that any new construction roads would actually be the cost of the road. So that was a little different, you know, and I did have Michael provide a cost estimate. And that cost estimate that's in your packet that I put in there is just the road construction. Obviously, there'll be engineering fees on, on top of that a little bit. And then basically it states basically the cost of any sanitary improvements is the cost of the actual improvement putting it in there. Or if we establish a sanitary district, it's a cost for a acre of actually establishing it. And then the only other kind of changes we made last year is that we basically gave them, it used to be, once we did a project, we'd assess them right away and they either paid the assessment, you know, within 30 days or go to the county for them to put out payments. We actually added, we give the adjoining property owners a year to pay that city, to this, or pay that assessment to the city before we would send it to the county. So give them a little more time to pay, you know, make payments to us or pay it front. So those are kind of the changes we made last year and that's what's before you in the packet right now.
Looks like we're still not enough careers necessarily, so.
Yeah, yeah, I was kind of surprised at the cost estimate Michael come up with because I thought it'd be more than that, actually.
Right, so if someone were to look at this document and say, why would I pay too much if his estimate is 185? In the event it's lower, we are receiving, pass on the lower.
Yeah, because I mean, why would we charge them more than what it's actually costing the city? And that doesn't seem good practice, Theresa says.
No, right, this is kind of a not to exceed.
Yeah, exactly, not to exceed, yeah. The 200 is a not to exceed and.
And it's not written that way, but if we needed to, we could amend our ardes to.
Yeah, exactly. We can amend this resolution, so you know, that's why this, this is the core discussion here tonight.
But we know we're gonna have roads that are gonna be needing, when we start talking budget, we start talking our CIP, we know that there's roads we're gonna have to be constructing. We need to, I wanted to have, at least get this discussion out there so people can start thinking about it, so we're ready.
Yeah, and as it, you know, as it moves, industrial, collector, art, general, it's, usually are designed higher, have more expenses.
Right.
The city has historically paid that difference as well.
Correct. Right, because we did on Maine, I think we did on Mickelson.
Mickelson definitely, yeah.
Right. Because when we go in with thicker road or a truck, truck route road, we make sure they don't have to suck that up. don't have to suck that up.
We've usually just tried to assess with a local.
Yeah. But it's more, I just, I guess I just wanted everybody to, it's one of the things, get it out there, so we know we're going to have to deal with this.
So yeah, we take no action.
Right, yeah, really.
If you don't want any changes, this policy will stay in place for another year when we view it next year. If you do want to make changes, then we have to, I would come back with you with an update of resolution. But if, yeah, you're good with what we have in place, no actions needed.
Proactiveness. Look at that. Who would have thought? All right. Comments, questions, or not? One last thing, we received our Secretary's Award for Drinking Water Excellence. For 17 consecutive years, City of Hartford has been presented the Secretary's Award for Drinking Water Excellence. So this is a, this is a great thing, and Craig and our water people, congratulations.
Craig, Neil, Jesse, and they all got.
You're back. Yeah, we got, you know, this, we can hang that on the wall. Yeah, it says, still says Jeremy, but it's all right.
Yeah, I know.
I'll let them get by with a lot of things.
Stakes a little behind.
Nobody knows. I'm so under the radar. All right. I would like to entertain a motion if somebody would make it to go into a secretary session for economic development personnel. All in favor? All right, all right. I think somebody made a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All right.